Order for March 23rd, 2022, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Where's my agenda? Okay, roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Absent, excused.
Christopher Daggy.
Here.
Chris Hiltonan.
Here.
Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Absent, excused.
Robert Musling, here. Robert Jacobs.
Here.
And Kathy Schweickert.
Here, thank you. Item number four is approval slash amendments to the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. We're gonna do a roll call and we're going to give Robert time to learn. Christine is helping him.
So, Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Burchard, absent. Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hiltonan.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel, absent. Robert Musling, yes. Bob Jacobs. Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you. Item number five is approval of minutes.
May I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 23rd, 2022 Planning Commission?
Any discussion?
Just like I said.
Christopher. Just tell me to slow down. I have no problem with that. Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
I passed. I was not at that meeting.
Mark Burchard, absent. Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hiltonan.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel is absent. Robert Musling, yes. Robert Jacobs.
Yes.
Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you. Item number six is a public hearing, but we do not have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. It's just the way the agenda came out, so I'll try to get that corrected the next time around. Item number seven is new business. Seven A is recreation survey, and I want to turn it over to Steve.
Good evening. You've had, as you know, we put a recreation survey on, a Parks and Rec survey on last meeting. You looked at the questions and approved them. They've been on, the survey's been on for a little over three weeks now. And we have a tremendous response. We're up to 161. I believe what you were sent are the results of maybe up to 150 something. So they've been slowly trickling in. It's maybe time to close the survey. But I just wanted to, you know, I know you have the results there. The, there are in the survey. There are pie charts that show you the answers to the different questions. But I think the meat of it is, are all the comments that came with it? And the last I checked, there was over 75 pages of comments and survey summaries and that. Overall, the survey, you know, was completed by mostly your residents. There were several outsiders that basically, you know, that talked. For example, 134 of them were your residents. 10 were visitors, nine just worked in clay, and four were business owners, and six described themselves as other, whatever that might mean. The age groups were scattered across the board, but the predominantly, predominant age group was in the, it was in the 46, 64-year-old range. So that kind of gives you an idea that some of the results may be skewed towards seniors. And you did have a large percentage of seniors aged 65 or older. 55 of that's over a quarter, I mean nearly a third, were seniors. So it just gives you, you know, it gives you an idea of what you can expect in some of the responses. And I think we'll see that in a minute. Most of the people visited the township park here, and a few visited Pearl Beach Pier. Several of them said they haven't visited anything. What are the top recreational establishments that your group participates in? It ranges all over the board, but mostly they're water sports, but not necessarily splash pad type. But mostly fishing, boating, that kind of stuff, which is not really a surprise either. You can see all the different responses here. Dog walking, boating, hiking, canoeing, a lot of fishing. I think you all have this, so I'm not gonna stop and deal with each one. Let me go down to the next question. This is P. What do you consider to be the three most important features when visiting a park? Top was nature, walking trails.
Is there supposed to be a PowerPoint on this?
Oh, you're not getting what I'm getting. Sorry. I'm assuming you're reading all, seeing all this.
No, and actually I noticed it's in your face glaring, and I'm like, mm, we're missing something. Sorry, I didn't mean to rob. You could put a podium.
I don't know why it's not working. It was, uh...
Technology's not our friend, as we say. Christine was looking at me like, are you gonna say something?
It was working when I started here, when I mean, I put this on. I don't know. Let me try and...
Is it on the bottom?
No.
It's a window screen.
There's no signal.
It's the weather.
I don't know. It's working here. It's not picking it up up there. See if I can...
I have no help as far as that technology. I'm sorry.
It's on.
Yeah. Well...
Let me see. That's my, that's my computer there.
Yeah. Do you have to click mirroring?
I'm probably gonna have to just, you have copies of it? Probably have to go through that one.
I hit the wrong button. I printed mine, so if anybody wants to look at it, fine. I've looked through it already, so I...
Anything I can do is try to reboot and see if it works real quick.
I see some people have their computers, so I'll share this copy with anybody.
I apologize. I do not know what's going on. It's playing here. It's showing my screen on the bottom, but it's not picking up the top from that thing.
No, you tried. There's something much more we can do, so if you just wanna keep going forward. I know we received it. It's just, obviously, this is being recorded. It's not gonna be displayed. Take a look at the website, right?
Pardon me?
They can look at this information on the website.
The information was placed on the website. Again, as of today, there's 161 responses. Most of them skewed towards seniors or... The water sports is what was predominantly. One of the things they wanted, what was the most important, number one was restrooms. Walking trails, leisurely activities was probably the biggest request by the respondents. There was some requests for, a lot of requests for more pickleball courts, which is typically senior-related. Again, bathrooms were big, dog park trails were big, that kind of thing. It wasn't your, there wasn't a lot of response for active recreation, Little League fields or anything like that. Other than that, I think, you know, the responses are good enough that we can begin the process of developing a action plan with your input and getting that going to get this thing moving along. The, the beginning part of the recreation plan has to deal with demographics. That's being put together right now, updated demographics, based from the Southeast Michigan Council of Government and their reports. I'll have that available for you for the next meeting. But we're moving along on schedule. I guess I would ask you to consider closing the survey so we can finalize that and moving on with the, the demographics and the action plan.
So do you think the response we so far received is a good response?
It's an excellent response.
As far as the number of responses?
Yeah, rate, Hyrum Township did this and got 119, and they kept it up for two months.
Oh, okay.
So I know there's a little bit higher density here, but I think the response of 160 is just very well, very good. And I've noticed, like I said, over the last couple of weeks, it's just slowed to a trickle. We had a big push, and I don't know where they put it on, whether it was Facebook or just the website. But we had a great push. The first weekend, we rolled over 100.
What's everybody think?
I have just one quick question. Because our, because we know the demographic we got were more towards the older crowd. And what are the thoughts of, where do we, where do we go to try to get some input from the younger crowd? You know, not that the older crowd doesn't count, but if, you know, if we're gonna build this plan, are we building this plan based on this criteria and it's...
Yeah, you make a good, great point, Chris. You know, if somebody has so many ideas, we could send it, maybe we could figure out a way to send it to the schools.
That's what I was wondering, maybe if we could get into the schools and maybe have this survey, maybe not even the survey itself, but a link to the survey sent, sent home with the kids or something, just so that... Because I, I mean personally, I would like to see what some of the younger families are looking for. Not that, again, not that I don't care what the older people are looking for, because that's where I'm headed, is to, you know, what the older people are looking for. But I, I, I know just from being involved in a lot of the school activities and things, that there are, there are some things that maybe they would want to talk about, but aren't, aren't getting it to us. And I don't know why, I mean, again, they, they still have the same avenues of, of social media and things that everybody else does. But again, looking through this whole survey, it does look like that we, we kind of are missing the younger group just by looking at the age on that, on your graph. And we're, we're, we either are an older community, which I think we are an older community, but we do have some youth.
I think it's an excellent point. I can work with the staff and see if we can get into the schools.
And I can, I mean, I've got some connections within the, the school districts that maybe I can help just facilitate that a little bit, just so maybe we can get a wider range. I hate to have everybody go through this work and maybe have missed someone.
Well, and that's, I'll be honest, I kind of forgot about it. I didn't see a link in my email. And I had, I did not see anything on Facebook and, or anything else. And I'm part of the younger, the younger generation.
I'm not gonna brag.
I'm beginning to feel...
So, I mean, if I missed it, how many are not missing it? Yes, we wanna take care of the older generation, but at the same time, the, we wanna keep the community where it's like the size that it is. And if you push out all the younger people, it's a hindrance to the...
I know you're involved in Little League, correct?
Yep.
And we, we've got some people in some of the younger youth sports that we, we have connections with. Maybe, maybe if we can send an email blast out, maybe Little League will send an email blast out to membership. I know you guys are firing up. And maybe we can send emails out to some of these younger organizations or something. I don't know, just...
I think it's a good idea, possibly. High school, one, high school, junior high, and the elementary schools, because kids have a way of coming up with really cool ideas.
They really do.
They do. There was a couple of comments in here about wanting to see activities like for the summer for the youth and stuff. There was one or two comments, but there was, you're right, there's an absence of that type of...
So if we could, maybe we keep it open for another month. I, again, I hate to drag it out, but I don't wanna miss them. So if we keep it open for another month and maybe reach out to the schools to see if they could assist us in an email blast or something like that.
Put it on their websites.
Yeah, their websites, and, you know, because they have direct contact with all parents. If they send it home, maybe the parent pulls an email up and says, I'll take this quick survey and...
Well, I say no, as long as it gets approved or whatever, the school will send out an email.
And I think they would approve this because it's obviously important for everybody, so...
So what would be your suggestion on how to facilitate that?
I think if we, I could, I could get an email to the school superintendent. I just met with him on other issues recently and see if he would send a survey out to maybe his, the principals, and they could facilitate moving that. If that would be okay, I would, like I said, I would just like to see it maybe hit.
We're already doing it. We may as well spend a little extra time, not extra time, but spend a little more time and see if we can get more input from that.
So I can reach out to tomorrow, I'll reach out with him tomorrow if that's okay and get this over to him.
Need any assistance from me, just let me know.
Okay. Yeah, I think if I just get him the link to the survey and say, hey, this is kind of important for the community.
Perfect.
They would be all on board.
I think it'd be great.
Okay.
Thanks for the offer.
No, no problem.
Sounds good. Any other comments, questions? So it sounds like we're gonna hold off release for another month until next meeting. And maybe you'll still get more input and hopefully we'll get another influx.
Perfect.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Yeah. It's showing the bottom of my screen, but not the...
You know, like I said, technology doesn't always...
How can it show one and not the other?
Yeah, it doesn't always work for us when we wanted to, so even though if you try it ahead of time. Okay, item 70 is planning commission bylaws. I brought this up because numerous months ago, I noticed that our bylaws have called a typo or conflict in the time we start. So, Steve, were you, I'm sorry? Oh, there's another one? Oh, you're right, there is another one. Okay, Steve, were you involved in doing this?
No.
No, okay, so this was Cindy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if we're on page two, we have section one. 7:30 should be seven. Section, and there's two of those in section one, I apologize. Section two, first line should be changed from 7:30 to seven. Anybody else see anything? So, Steve, if I'm wrong, we need a motion support?
We need a motion to adopt them with changes or whatever.
Okay. Go ahead.
May I make a motion to amend our bylaws of the Clay Township Planning Commission, specifically under Article Five, Section One. The times reflected are 7:30. They should be corrected to 7:00 PM, and there's two of them mentioned in that section one. And also, section two, the first line, that 7:30 should be changed to 7:00 PM.
Let's second that.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing nothing. When you're ready to do a roll call, would you please do so?
Who seconded that? Okay. Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Mark Burchard is absent. Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Hiltonan?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel is absent. Robert Musling, yes. Bob Jacobs?
Yes.
Kathy Schweickert?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to item 7C, which is a rezoning request. We were sent an updated agenda on, I believe it was Monday night about 6:15-ish. I apologize in advance because I was not aware of anything being updated until I saw it on Tuesday morning. And that's not the way things should occur, and seems to be a little bit of a communication difficulty or understanding going on. In our packet, we do have the checklist from the various water sewer like we normally have. We do not have anything from our planner as far as a written item, but you said you might have a verbal presentation you could do, so I'm gonna ask you to do that.
This is a rezoning, the request that came in for a parcel over on Harson's Island. It's immediately adjacent to the piece with, where the modax. There's, they own property right there. It's from the company that runs the ferry. It's a Champion Marine. When you get off the, onto the island, there's a piece that they own directly adjacent there on the left. They're asking for a rezoning to the adjacent parcel even further to their left there. It's approximately 100 feet frontage and 280 foot in depth. It's 0.069, 0.69 acres. They're asking for a rezoning from R1 to C3. The, they have the right to ask for the rezoning. They've prepared and submitted the proper paperwork through the township to request a rezoning. Your option tonight is to schedule the public hearing for the next meeting.
Okay, and items get set on the agenda, and the only person who gets to set those is the chairperson. This came up and I was unaware of it. Apparently paperwork has been in the building department in February. You can see the dates on there. In the past, our planner, before Steve, we had set up where they would give, you know, was it ready to go to set for public hearing or whatever. Steve, jump in here anytime you want to correct me if I'm misstating anything. Apparently Cindy, you saw the agenda and...
I, I, yeah, when the agenda came out. The original agenda came out, I contacted Cindy and said, what about the, the item that should be scheduled for a re-public hearing? And she says, oh, okay. And I said, I'll give a verbal report tonight's meeting to get it going. That was it.
Okay, and then this is where we end up. So I've spoken with Cindy, and this should not be happening and won't happen in the future just because we have to follow rules. The deadline should have been Wednesday noon. Everything's out. And, you know, if we make an exception for one, it just sets us up for bad.
And partially, it's somewhat my fault because I wasn't aware that the planning commission
Right.
requested a presentation to schedule a meeting, which is highly unusual, I'll be honest with you.
Which is what you said, so explain how other communities, so we have a, because since I've been sitting on the board, I think Christine's been here, this is the way we've always perceived it.
I understand that, yeah.
And it's usually done in letter form.
And a copy goes to the applicant.
A letter form from who?
From the planner.
And what does that say?
It's a review of what they've submitted and whether there's any concerns or items that the planning commission may want to address.
On the application itself or the rezoning itself?
I think in the past, we've had both.
Okay.
I have to go back.
I did talk to the attorney, and both of us have grave concerns on that.
Attorney being who? Our attorney being who?
Christine Anderson.
Thank you.
Typically, reviews or discussions of a rezoning are only conducted by the planning commission at a public hearing, at a public meeting. And to discuss the merits of the zoning ahead of time, I think is inappropriate, I'll be honest. And the attorney totally agreed with me. To discuss whether the application is complete or not, and it's ready to go to public hearing, is completely within your jurisdiction.
So there's two separate things we're talking about?
There's two separate things.
Okay.
I would not have a problem issuing a written memo to you or something saying, I reviewed the application. It appears to be complete and correct, and we're ready for a public hearing.
Okay.
To discuss the merits of the case, I don't think you or I should be doing that prior to the public hearing because the public's not involved and the petitioner isn't really legally notified.
So do you...
Most communities, however, doesn't even go, in fact, this is my only community that it goes to the planning commission to even schedule the public hearing. That's done typically by the staff. Staff looks it over, it meets the ordinance, they place it on the agenda, or asks the chairperson to place it on the agenda for a public hearing.
So, and I'm just talking out loud because I had to do a lot, talk to you, talk to Cindy, because there seemed to be mass miscommunication going on. And I don't want this hopefully ever to happen in the future.
I agree.
Talking for rezoning only. If somebody's asking for rezoning, your suggestion would be what you just said as far as...
If you wanna keep it the way you've been doing it, that my recommendation be based solely on the application and not the merits of the case.
Okay.
And that we do not discuss the merits of the case prior to the public hearing. If you could go the other route and just skip this step and go directly to a public hearing, but that's up to you. That's totally within your jurisdiction. It's unusual, because most communities, especially these days, want to move things along. They don't want an extra step for the petitioner. But I, I mean, I don't have a problem with either way you go, but I, I do have a problem in discussing or putting on paper the merits of the case prior to the hearing.
With that explanation, because I need a clarification after going through how we got to where we are tonight. Anybody have any comments, any more questions, any thoughts? Do we wanna stick with how we've been doing it with it now? Explanation, and I, have you talked to Cindy Babish?
I have not.
Okay. Because I would like to get the lines of communication straight.
I wanted to be here tonight to make a determination. I did talk to the attorney. And the attorney said, Chairman, that chairperson, that you might wanna talk to her too.
Okay.
She said she'd be open for a phone call from you.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
That'll be on the next phone call. So do we just wanna think about it till next meeting, or if you have more questions, please, Steve's here to ask questions.
I see Steve's point with trying to expedite the process because, you know, I, I think, looking back at, you know, some of the other cases we had looked at, that maybe if we, we are able to handle this portion of it administratively, and then it just comes to us as a, to set the public hearing or, you know, the public hearing's there, then maybe that does speed it up a little bit. I don't know. I mean, I don't know if there's any downside to that.
I don't think there's a downside. I think what Steve said is very correct. I think expediting things and doing these for our citizens is very important, not to drag things out. That's how people get really angry.
Yes. Because that, you know, because when we set the public hearing, then, I mean, we can, there could be a time that that actually gets postponed then, right? I mean, I think we've seen that.
I'm more concerned too, if you do, we do have discussion on setting a public hearing, that, you know, one of the commissioners here inadvertently makes a comment about, I don't like this, or this is a problem or something. Then we're all negotiating or creating an opinion prior to the public hearing. creating an opinion prior to the public hearing. And that leads to some kind of, that's a liability. It definitely is. And my job is to protect you as best I can based on what I can, I know. So, I mean, I just want to avoid those kind of things.
So do we.
Yeah. I guess I just have a question as to, I mean, normally on, on our agendas, there was always a little portion at the bottom that gave us upcoming projects. If, if we're gonna just have the staff set the public hearing, how do we know what's even coming up?
Oh, I didn't know you had that, but I can, we can make sure that's on there.
Is it unfinished business or, or future business that's coming up?
Like to be, projects to be completed or something is always on?
Yeah, that would be lovely, wouldn't it?
We used to have it, and I, I have not seen that.
I haven't seen, I didn't know you even had that.
Yeah, that would be beautiful.
We were getting that for a while, and then it just kind of stopped.
In, in February, I had asked Cindy, and I know she's busy, to, she called it the, um, C A B, Cindy, yeah, but she knows, P C items for February, current, future on hold office notes. I'm wondering if we should maybe have her do that to include each month and send it out to all of us?
Mm-hmm.
Would that make sense?
It could. And I could also update you on my planner's report if I'm aware of them too.
That would be great.
I could update you on what I know is coming up.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I'm just trying to learn the system as you guys, with, with you guys, yeah.
Yeah, at least you know it's out there.
Sure.
Instead of like, where did this come from?
Oh, I could easily say, yeah, an application came in, it hasn't been completed, complete yet, we're looking at it. It's for a rezoning. Yeah.
I think the public would probably appreciate that too.
I think they would too.
Having a little bit of a heads up.
Sure.
So you're willing to work with Cindy to make that happen? Cindy's the one who signs all this information out.
Happy to.
So can we still then stick with the deadline for all materials needs to be?
Oh, I think we need to, for sure. Yeah, the deadlines are appropriate and we don't want to...
And that's why I was concerned how this got on the agenda tonight, because if I do it for one, it's, it just opens a whole...
One of worms.
Big can of worms. And I'm like, this is, this is difficult.
I understand.
So, um, so if we're looking to do it administratively through the office, do we have to do a motion or anything?
I stench, because it's on your agenda tonight, we haven't officially changed that policy that you need to, if you, you need to appropriately put this item on the next agenda.
So I'm gonna go back to item 7C, which is 1682 North Channel. We have the package that we have provided. We have Steve's, um, verbal input. It needs to be set for a public hearing. That's where we're at at this point with how we have set up, the way we function at this point. In the future, we can do something different, but at this point, we need to finish this this way, so.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Uh, you need to state your motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to place 1682 North Channel for a public hearing for the next planning commission meeting, which is?
It will be April 27th.
April 27th.
At 7:00.
At 7:00 PM.
And that would be for rezoning.
Res zoning.
One second, I'll make a motion.
So you okay over there? She's been quiet tonight.
What was the, what was the date again?
It is, yes. Yes.
Mark Burchard is absent. Uh, Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Kozel, absent. Robert Musling, yes. Robert Jacobs?
Yes.
Kathy Schweigert?
Yes, thank you. All right, it will be set for a public hearing on April 27th and appropriate notices will go out. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also recognize Jacob is here too, so hopefully you understood what we just did. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll see you, I'm sure, next month. How's that? Item number eight is unfinished business. Don't believe we have any unfinished business at the moment. So I'm gonna move on to item number nine, which is planning consultant's report.
Couple of things that I'm aware of, uh, that may be coming up. One is a boathouse that was already built, that's been caught on Ocean View Drive, Ocean...
Oceanside.
Oceanside Drive. Uh, they've submitted an application for special land use approval, but the application is incomplete. We're trying to see how to handle that. Uh, but the thing, the building was built without any approvals from what I understand, so we'll need to deal with that. It's a very nice, large facility with a, with a residence in it too.
Nice.
Yeah, but that's, that might be coming before you. There is, uh, I continue to get calls about, uh, from the individual that we dealt with last time on the pet place outside.
Oh, BoomtoRide.
So we're trying, still trying to work with her on that. And then another one, I got a call the other day, somebody's looking to open up some agribusiness on their property and sell on the roadside. And, you know, I gave her the regulations on that. Those are the three that have, residents have contacted me in regards to different things. The state is still considering regulating short-term rentals and may again be taking that away, but nothing definitive has come out of the state. And they're definitely looking at lowering the number of plants that a marijuana caregiver can grow in their house or grow on the property from 72 down to 12. And if that happens, they'll be taking local control away from the communities on that. That's all I have for now.
May I ask you just a couple of questions? I believe last month's meeting, we, um, we're looking at, you and Gary are looking at accessory buildings, section 301, height exceptions in section 324, and outdoor storage in residential districts, section 316. Have we made any progress?
Yeah, the accessory buildings have all been, that, that provisions have been changed. There were a couple of things at the joint meeting you asked for. I have to look at those notes, but that hasn't, I haven't had a chance to carry.
How do accessory buildings get changed?
Uh, not change. Uh, excuse me, wrong.
I'm going home now.
I've made those suggested revisions and Gary has reviewed them.
Okay, so you made suggested revisions, Gary's...
We haven't come back to you yet, but I'm waiting to make the, the rest of the changes pursuant to what the last, there is a joint meeting, the joint meeting we had, there are a couple of other changes that were requested. Uh, those haven't been done yet.
I think, what was the height? Remember, Shemansky kept saying something about...
Boathouse heights.
Boathouse heights.
Boathouse heights, yeah.
Storage containers.
And some kind of, and we're still talking about fences too.
Somebody's groaning over here.
Yeah. But we're not ready to come back with you, the whole complete package here. And I don't want to hold a public hearing and then come back again.
Front yard, backyard.
Oh, front yard, backyard was the other discussion.
On waterfront. Distinction between front yard and backyard on waterfront.
Waterfront, backyard.
That's the continuing.
Yeah. It's not just here. It's IRA, everybody else.
Is it?
Yeah, New Baltimore.
Have they come to any understanding with, or they're still discussing?
Yeah, uh, IRA has pretty much come to an understanding. They have a front yard setback, a rear yard setback, and then a waterfront setback that trumps everything else. So if you have a waterfront setback, you have certain requirements, regardless of whether it's a rear yard or a front yard. That might be something we're looking at. We could look at here.
All right. I thought I just asked the question since last meeting, we were talking about those also. So thank you for the update.
Sure.
Item number 10 is Z B A representative's report.
Uh, we had a meeting last Wednesday and to dovetail off about what you were talking about. A guy came in requesting to build a new garage taller than 15. Then it was discovered he really wants a second floor on it as well for woodworking. Then we figured out the notice hadn't gone out properly. And he didn't have finalized plans with exact numbers on them. So kind of threw a wrench in the whole thing. So we delayed him till next month and sent him back to his architect to give those measurements on the 20 minutes. Once again, 15, 3,000. And there was a little bantering as to, and I'm not a builder, but it was, well, is it this default line from, from wherever? And finally figured out it's whatever Gary says, with this building official. And that, that, 85 builders can't decide. It's just our building official. So, um, that keeps coming up though with 15.
You weren't at the joint meeting, but Mr. Treppa, who's the chair of your, of the Z B A, he had mentioned that during our joint meeting.
He did a lot of that.
And I think it's something maybe we need to look at again. I know we've looked at it and we've done things in the past recently, but apparently we still haven't, we're having a lot of cases. Thank you. So he'll be back next month. All right. Item number 11 is board representative's report, which would be Mark, and Mark is not here today. Um, he did want me to mention that, um, apparently due to the 2020 census, that we lost over 600 residents for Clay, which means we now are gonna have to somehow, as the township make up a hundred thousand dollars in the budget somewhere. So, yeah, I guess that's what happened. So, other than that, he didn't really seem to have anything else to add unless anybody else was at the meeting can add to it. I was not at the meeting, so. I watched it. I haven't watched it yet. On my thing to do. Nope. Item number 12 is chairperson's report. I, um, got clarification from Artie Bryson in regards to Gary, who is obviously in the building department, about his attendance at P C meetings in the past, because he's been at quite a few of them. And I want a clarification because we're always watching how we're spending money. Money, excuse me. His response to me, and I'm gonna quickly paraphrase it, is not a requirement of Gary to go to every P C or Z B A meeting. It is an extra cost to the township for his attendance, which I'd probably add would be the same thing for our township attorney. Um, I have told Gary to go if there is something specific on the agenda that may require his input, such as an ordinance consideration. If anyone on the P C has a question for Gary, you can always email or call him instead of waiting until the meeting rolls around. I know that Steve and Gary communicate a few times every week or more. Steve should be able to give you any updates just as well as Gary can. So I encourage anybody on this board, or Z B A for that matter, if you have any questions. Cindy Babish has told me usually the best way for getting ahold of Gary is, um, to email him. So please don't hesitate. It's, you know, part of what we're here to do and...
He's helped us a lot, excuse me, as far as Z B A.
Has he?
A lot.
And he's been at quite a few of our meetings too, but again, trying to get clarification because I know everybody's concerned about how much money we spent for whatever we're doing. So whether there's attorneys in attendance or not. Um, other than that, I don't have anything as far as the chairperson's report. So I'm gonna move on to item number 13, planning commission member comments. Comments? Everybody's quiet. Our talkers must be absent. Item number 14 is public comments. Um, I'm not gonna read the public comments rules because I think pretty much everybody knows them. They're printed on our agendas or on the website. So if anybody in the public has any comments to make, please come forward to the podium, state your name, and we can go from there. One more time, any public comments? Hearing none. I am gonna move on to item number 15, which is adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
We had a motion to adjourn with support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? We need to adjourn. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming. See you next month. Um, Steve, can I catch you?